Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Good evening. I'd like to turn to Board Member Deborah Napper to open up our meeting. Thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting by remembering three students who passed away earlier this school year. Although we celebrate their lives and the positive impact they made on the Guilford County School family, our hearts are extended in grief to their loved ones. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to extend our deepest condolences to the families, friends, and teachers of Said Issa, Kenley Haddon, and Marquis Sledge.
Said Issa was part of our Gateway family for only a few short days, yet his impact will remain on our hearts forever. The staff member who knew him best was his home hospital teacher, Natasha Shu-ah Siler, who said, "As a teacher, you never know how a student will impact your life. You know that they will." The first time I worked with Said, I knew he liked the story that I read because the corner of his mouth moved ever so slightly upward. On my next visit, his big brown eyes were open and moving back and forth across whatever I held in front of him. Said loved his family, and they loved him dearly as well. When Ayesha, his sister, was in the background, he had a smile big enough for everyone in the room to see. His face would always light up at the sound of his mother's voice. I am grateful to the family for letting me be a part of their lives. Said's memory will always be in the fabric of our hearts.
The words that we use to describe Kenley Haddon, another Gateway student, are perfect because they are from her loving parents. Kenley was sent into our lives to teach us to live with empathy and compassion. She loved everyone, and her spirit was shaped not knowing hate or judgment of others. This was her purpose in life, to show us how to live by treating others with kindness. In this world that we live in, we all need a Kenley in our lives. Kenley also loved Jake and the Neverland Pirates. So, as we close, let us say, "Kenley, you are the best matey a mate could have, and Gateway is so fortunate that we were able to sail the seas with you."
We grieve the death of Marquis Sledge, who was a student at Smith High School and is remembered for his positive attitude and his gregarious smile. In the midst of working hard in summer football and the heat, he always found a reason to encourage, to laugh, to persevere, to keep going, displayed great resilience and friendship with those around him. Even though he was newer to Smith, you would never know that he had not been a part of the Ben L. Smith family because he fit instantly. He quickly made an impact on the football team, and he had a bright future ahead of him academically and athletically. He was a leader, he was a competitor, and he was, even more than that, a positive spirit off the field, and we miss him.
Thank you. Although we were only privileged to know these students for a brief amount of time, in their own ways, they helped to create heartwarming memories that will be cherished forever. To honor these students, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We want to continue our meeting by recognizing our January Employee of the Month, Joey Solomon. If you're here, please come to the podium. And as you are coming, I would like to say a few things. With heating systems dating back as far as the 1950s, repairing our HVAC systems, our heating, venting, air conditioning systems, is enough to keep a full team busy, especially this time of year. When a part fails or a fix is needed, one man is ready to take on the job. Joey Solomon is one of three HVAC technicians in Guilford County Schools. He goes above and beyond to help ensure that our students have comfortable and safe learning environments, leading to his nomination for Employee of the Month. "I am writing to express my profound appreciation for Mr. Joey Solomon's outstanding performance and dedication as HVAC Technician Two for Guilford County Schools," wrote Mark Miller, Director of Maintenance. "His exemplary work ethic, technical expertise, and unwavering commitment to excellence have not gone unnoticed. Solomon's ability to consistently deliver high-quality service even in challenging circumstances sets a remarkable standard for our entire team. Whether it's ensuring the comfort and safety of our school environments or responding promptly to emergency situations, his contributions have been invaluable. Additionally, his positive attitude, attention to detail, and willingness to go above and beyond make him an integral part of our maintenance department." Joey received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of January, your photo will be displayed here at the district's central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member Deborah Napper to read aloud the certificate honoring Joey.
The Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition is presented to Joey Solomon in Maintenance for Employee of the Month, sponsored by Greensboro J.C.'s in January of 2025, and is signed by Dr. Oakley and Chairwoman Hayes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wish there was more of me to go around.
We do too.
Because it's a lot of stuff. A lot. And please don't forget the rest of the fellows and ladies in the maintenance department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. We'd also like to shake your hand, and thank you, your family, any school representative that's here with you. Please come forward. All right. Now, we're going to recognize our Volunteer of the Month for January. Would Ms. Janice Garringer, please come to the podium at this time? If you can make your way up. Ms. Garringer, and I hope I'm saying this right. Okay. So, it's Garringer?
It is.
Okay, wonderful. So, Ms. Garringer is a retired Guilford County School employee who has now become a faithful volunteer with Parkview Elementary. In partnership with the Covenant Church United Methodist and Parkview's Kindness Backpack Closet, Ms. Garringer plays an essential part in the coordination and weekly delivery of over 140 bags that provide much-needed support to our students over the weekend until returning back to school. "Her dedication and willingness to still give back to our Guilford County Schools family is greatly appreciated, and it exemplifies what our community embodies and represents," says Angie Young, Family Engagement Coordinator at Parkview Village Elementary, who nominated Janice Garringer. As Volunteer of the Month for January, Ms. Garringer was surprised with a $50 gift card courtesy of Toyota of Greensboro, and during the month of January, your photo will be on display here at the district's central offices, Parkview Village Elementary, and Toyota of Greensboro. At this time, I'd like to call on Board Member T. Diane Bellamy Small to read out and present you with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the Board, Ms. Garringer.
Ms. Garringer, thank you for being here, and thank you for all of your support and work with Parkview. And I have your card, okay? The Guilford County Board of Education Certificate of Recognition presented to Janice Garringer, Parkview Village Elementary School for Volunteer of the Month for January 2025. And this is signed by our Superintendent, Dr. Whitney Oakley, and our Board Chair, Deana Hayes. Congratulations, and thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. Garringer. As you make your way back to the podium, we would love to hear from you, and we also want to shake your hand and to congratulate anyone that's here with you from the school or your family.
Thank you so much. I feel honored. And as a teacher, it's hard to get out of education. So, when I finally got out of teaching, I wanted to do something else to help the students, and Parkview needed something, and that's where my heart is. I want to thank Ms. Young and Dr. Curry for their support.
Thank you, and we'd like to thank whoever's here with you as well. I will say that Board Member Kim Erby is joining us via Zoom, just attending to her family, so we are glad that she can be here with us. Thank you, and congratulations again to our Volunteer of the Month. And this time, I would like to call Dr. Julius Monk to the podium for a special recognition.
I don't recognize the person that's here.
Hello.
It is. We're gonna change some school boundaries tonight, so we brought you back. That's why all these people are here, because of that school boundary. Ladies and gentlemen, it is both an honor and privilege to stand before you tonight to celebrate an extraordinary individual, Donna Bell, whose retirement marks the culmination of a remarkable career. Tonight, we gather not only to honor her years of dedicated service, but also recognize the profound impact she has made on our organization and our community. Donna has consistently demonstrated unparalleled leadership, guiding us through challenges with wisdom and resilience. Her positive attitude has been a beacon of inspiration, uplifting everyone around her, and fostering an environment of collaboration, respect, and excellence. Her expertise in facilities operation and planning has set a standard of professionalism and innovation that will continue to inspire us long after her retirement, and when she comes back in six months to help us out. As we bid farewell to Donna in her professional capacity, we are reminded of the countless contributions she has made. Her legacy is one of integrity, commitment, and a genuine passion for making a difference. Tonight is our distinct pleasure to present Donna Bell with one of North Carolina's highest honors, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Don't cry yet. Don't cry yet, I have more words. This prestigious award is a testament to her exceptional service, leadership, and dedication to the betterment of our community and state. It is fitting recognition for someone who has given so much of themselves for a greater good. Donna, your journey with us may have come to a close, but your influence will resonate for years to come. On behalf of everyone here, thank you for your incredible contributions, your unwavering commitment, and your inspiring leadership. Congratulations on a well-deserved honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. You've all caught me at a time when my voice is really was coming back, but it's not great. And so, you probably lucked out, because you know, sometimes in those closed-session meetings, I had a tendency to speak a little bit more about some of the projects that we were working on. And I am so honored. I cannot even tell you, I'm speechless. But I can tell you that it has been an honor working with all of you and to support all of our students and families in Guilford County Schools. It has been so much fun working in the background and supporting and helping our students and our staff and our families. And there are so many people here that are so dedicated to what they do, and working with them as well has been a great honor. And I hope I won't disappear. I'll be around, but I hope to continue to see you all and to not fall over while I'm speaking. But I'm really, really quite honored, and I thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much. This has been an honor. And so, I guess before my voice leaves me completely, thank you so much.
Thank you, Donna. All right. And now, for our last recognition of the evening, I will turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Oakley.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we have a special gift for our board members courtesy of the Career and Technical Education Department and woodworking students from Andrews High School. So, these beautiful pieces of wood art are an example of how students learn through CTE and how they can be both artistic and useful. So, you'll see that the wood has been cut to form the state of North Carolina, and that the Guilford County Schools logo marks our place on the map. And we are grateful to each of our board members for your dedication and your willingness to do the challenging work of guiding our district forward. Big special thanks to CTE and the Andrews students for their creativity and their craftsmanship. Board members will take just a minute. We'll let you turn this way so we can get a picture. They're big, so just be still. Don't hurt anybody. Come in a little.
All right. Well, thank you so much. This is lovely. Wow. Those are amazing. So, now we are at public comments, and just want to remind our guest that each member has three minutes to speak. We ask that when you come to the podium, you give your name and address. If you are supportive of what someone is saying, we ask you to demonstrate that by doing this so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted. You have three minutes. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left, so please wrap up your comments so that when the red light comes on, that your time is up, and you will be able to have completed all of your comments, and the next speaker can come and share their information. Our first speaker for this evening is Jennifer Noble, followed by Jesse Poole. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Noble. I am a proud parent of a sophomore at Grimsley High School, and my kids have been in Guilford County Schools for 15 years at least. I'm just coming to speak to encourage and exhort you to continue caring for the least of the kids in our community, that especially, I'm aware during these remote learning days, that for a lot of families, it's a challenge, and that I know it must be such a struggle to have such tight resources and not an ability to do everything we want to do. And I just hope that you continue to prioritize those who have less so that our community can grow together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jesse Poole, followed by Cam Cooper. Welcome.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Good evening.
My name is Travis, and I have a daughter at Page, and she's been having issues with the remote learning. Every time she tried to log in with Microsoft, she can't get her ID, so then she had to do the phone call, and she's been getting absent every day for the remote learning. So, we have to do a better job of doing that right there. And she was complaining, getting frustrated because she's doing the work and being considered absent every day. Thank you.
Also, if there's an issue that hasn't been resolved, we'll have a staff member meet with you outside or anyone here that has a comment. If there's an issue like that and you need some assistance, okay? Thank you. Cam Cooper, followed by Jesse Purtle. Julie Purtle.
Welcome. Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Cameron Cooper, and I am proud to serve as the current student body president at Page High School. I am here tonight, not only as a leader, but as someone who genuinely loves our school's community. Page High School has an incredible spirit that's built on resilience, pride, and the bonds we've formed over the years. But I would be doing my classmates a disservice if I didn't share the challenges we face daily in an environment that frankly doesn't reflect the excellence our students deserve. Let me paint you a picture of what we deal with. First, let's start with our auditorium, or what used to be one. I've never had a chance to give a speech there because it's recently been condemned. An auditorium is a symbol of a school's heart, where students come together to celebrate achievements, showcase talents, and build memories. We've lost that, and it's disheartening. In our classrooms, the heating and air conditioning are another constant battle. Some rooms are so cold that it feels like an igloo, while others feel like saunas. And when the air conditioning does work, it rattles and bangs, making it nearly impossible to concentrate. We have missed numerous school days because of this issue, and it serves as a reminder that our learning environment isn't a priority. Then, there are the bathrooms. This is a sensitive topic, but it's one that needs to be addressed. Many of our stalls don't have doors, and some of the urinals lack dividers. Privacy and dignity are basic rights, not luxuries. Every time I walk into one of those bathrooms, I think to myself, "How did it get to this point?" It's honestly mind-blowing. The cafeteria isn't much better. With only 350 seats for 900 students during lunch, it's overwhelmingly crowded. And when it gets cold, tables are crammed into jhuming, leaving some students without a place to eat. It's chaotic and demoralizing. The odor that lingers in the cafeteria makes the experience even more unbearable. The issues don't stop there. Our football locker room floods when it rains, and water gets into the washing machines. This means our jerseys can't be cleaned, forcing us to wear dirty uniforms. I remember in my freshman year, a teammate even contracted a staph infection because of this. It's not just inconvenient, it's unsafe, and frankly, inhumane. Finally, let's talk about the hallways. They're so congested that students often get frustrated and angry trying to make it to class on time. The stress of navigating these crowded spaces adds another layer of difficulty to an already challenging school day. These issues aren't just inconveniences, they're barriers to our education and our well-being. Page High School is full of students who are passionate, driven, and capable of greatness, but we need your help. We need facilities that match our potential. I'm asking you today to invest in us, invest in our future, because if there's one thing I know, it's that the students at Page High School are worth it. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Julie Purtle, followed by Adam Duggins. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. As of today at 4:00 p.m., the county contractors were still working on getting heat and airflow correctly moving through our school so that our kids can go back to school tomorrow. Page has lost five school days this year, an entire week due to these neglected and overlooked systems. The loss of days is the most impactful on the 75% of our school that is socio-economically disadvantaged. We are Title I school. We have children that rely on coming to school for lunch and breakfast and for heat and air and a safe place to be. This fall, $50 million was released as a deferred maintenance package. The Board has chosen to allocate and spend 57% of that $50 million on athletic fields. That's $28.5 million that you have chosen to put into athletic fields versus the HVAC systems in this county. These children are not being given a reliable in-person learning option. Another issue that needs immediate attention is the security on our campus. Our administrative team is outstanding. Our teachers and our SROs do everything they can and go above and beyond in the monitoring of over 80 outside entrances on our campus. We have four parking lots, a gymnasium, and multiple open common areas around campus. These open common areas are absolutely necessary to daily life at Page. As a result of an inadequate cafeteria space, Page has an open campus model. We have juniors and seniors go off campus for lunch, and we have a cafeteria with 350 seats that we have 1,800 children. So, now we have all of these children trying to get back into the school building in a five-minute bell period, and that is impossible to do safely. We can't use our metal detectors, and so it's a free-for-all. Everybody's coming in from every direction. We are very fortunate at Page to have outside parties willing to raise money privately to help with this list of problems. Page Alumni and Friends Association has helped for over 17 years. They've built satellite eating spaces, picnic tables, courtyards, but we have hundreds of kids all over campus in this environment where it is not protected and safe. As a mom, I have had too many phone calls in the past two and a half years for my mom telling me she is scared because of lockdown. Another safety concern is our senior parking lot. Our senior parking lot is completely unlit. There is no light. It is dark all the time. When you have a child playing basketball, as I do, she goes in and out of her car to the gym, and there's no protection, there's no camera, there's nothing for her to feel safe in getting to her car. We talked to the superintendent in the spring, and in the spring, we were promised Duke power. We talked again, and we have still been given nothing. And I would like to suggest that maybe you guys pay for some lighting in a temporary solution until we have a permanent one. Our families are divested. We have invested into this community, and we're ready for you to invest too. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Duggins, followed by Katie Poole.
They don't make these for me, for guys my size. Good evening. My name is Adam Duggins. I'm a Page High School graduate and parent. My family has proudly been part of the Page community for almost five decades. Tonight, I want to express my gratitude first for the incredible progress we've made in investing in our schools with the recent bonds. However, I must voice significant concerns about how we're allocating $2 billion. Seven years ago, I was lucky enough to join a delegation of Guilford County school and business leaders to tour Greenville, South Carolina. Many of you are aware of this trip. Greenville transformed its public school system with bold, innovative investments. Returning from that visit, I was so energized about what was possible here in Guilford County. Due to the courageous leadership of many of you, we passed bonds and have been able to significantly invest in our schools that were neglected. and have been able to significantly invest in our schools that were neglected for 50 years. With that in mind, I am concerned about the direction of the bond money. Many of the lessons learned from Greenville are being forgotten. The facility study was an important document, but it's just that. It's a document that gained alignment and momentum, but it's a static document that highlighted a moment in time. 2019 is not 2025. What did Greenville, what were the lessons from Greenville that we're forgetting? First, Greenville focused on equity across all schools and districts when spending the money. They ensured all campuses received some benefit and all districts were allocated significant funding for significant projects. Based on the narrowed scope of the 20 schools projected to be built, certain districts are disproportionately benefiting from the bond money. District 3 is receiving 28% of the funding for new schools. District 5, where Page resides, is receiving 5%. The second lesson, Greenville understood that high schools were the crown jewels. With the narrowed scope of the 20 schools, we're building K-38, Magnet, Middle, and Elementary Schools. But despite the largest investment in the history of Guilford County, we're not going to build a single new high school. That's $2 billion and not a new high school. Third, and perhaps most important, we are making design decisions for these new schools that don't match our economic situation. In an environment where funding is unlimited, we can build dream schools with all the bells and whistles. Claxton, Peck, and Faust are inspiring and amazing schools. They're amazing. But that's not the reality of the situation we face. When we have significant limitations, instead of building schools at $500 to $600 per square foot, we should be value engineering these buildings to save money, build more schools, impact more children. I'm grateful for the progress we've made, but I fear this bond may be our last if we continue down the current path and lose the community's trust. Page High School's community was promised multiple times, I was promised multiple times, that we would get a new school. Yet it remains overlooked. The recent facility challenges highlight a campus that simply put is obsolete. It's obsolete. It's embarrassing. We need real investment now to save Page. Thank you so much for your service time and thank you for listening.
Hi, my name is, well, I'm a lot shorter than he is.
Okay. Hold on just a minute. Katie Poole, that's you?
Yes.
Followed by Jesse Poole, who didn't get to speak. I think I called his name earlier and he didn't come to the podium. So Katie Poole, followed by Jesse Poole.
Hi, my name is Katie Poole. I am also a graduate and now a parent at Page High School. Go Pirates! While all of us here today are grateful for the improvement, improving measures that have taken place the past five to six years across the county and are excited to see Guilford County's schools continue to grow, I have three concerns that I would like to share with you tonight. First, I have serious concerns about the way we treat and manage our facilities. Not having working systems in our schools is completely and utterly unacceptable and continuing to allow severe deterioration to occur must stop. Some issues that I find alarming are, of your $967 million annual budget, only 300K is allocated to HVAC technicians for 126 schools. It is humanly impossible for you to appropriately manage that spread. Without proper preventative maintenance, the useful life of the systems we do have is drastically reduced, energy consumption is increased, and the risk for catastrophic failures is significantly increased. This goes for any building system. When there's a catastrophic failure, we should be complete, which should be completely anticipated, these outside techs do not know your facilities or systems and must spend hours learning a system that they have never seen. You are paying for that learning process, overtime, and in large crews due to these failures and their emergency status. Not to mention, you're using the most expensive companies around. Great companies, but expensive. Factually, other local vendors have tried to solicit their services at reduced rates and don't even get a call back. You are spending bad money over good. It's the wrong approach. Next, it is my opinion that the facility that is being used, that the facility study that is being used to make critical decisions for schools like Page is effectively invalid today. Capex is usually studied based on the individual useful life of systems on a five-to-10-year basis. Page High School is getting little to no preventative maintenance. Therefore, the reality that that study would be different today is very real. It is great that you have allocated money for the HVAC upgrades to the media center and auditorium. However, the roof in both of those areas of the school have significant roof leaks and there has been no remediation for these issues. Therefore, even with new HVAC in the auditorium, it will still not be usable. Not to mention the chairs that have been in place since 1959. Last, if I sit down and evaluate where these funds are being currently spent, there is great concern on how this county will move forward and continue to make the immediate necessary improvements. Where's the money being spent? Why is the money being spent on new concept schools when we can't even manage the ones we have? Why are we spending $500 to $600 per square foot for a new school when a more modest approach could be taken and you could spend $300 per square foot? The difference in savings here is significant and could solve a lot of these problems. I'm not convinced that teardowns are always the answer. In conclusion, I challenge you to take a fresh look at possible opportunities for change, to reconsider your systematic management approach and consider other opportunities like hiring asset managers to maintain your facilities and bring thoughtful consideration to operating decisions, to develop trade-specific committees of local community and district-based professionals that specialize in the specific needs that you all seem to fail in, and explore operating savings and partnerships to develop real capex plans and contribute to them. Please come walk the halls of Page High School, each of you, so you can see for yourself the greatness it brings and the true needs it really has. Thank you for your time, investment, and care for our schools, but we must do better. You can be the change that needs to happen.
Jesse Poole, followed by our final speaker, Kathy Kruska. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jess Poole. I'm a father and parent from Page High School with the rest of these folks in red. We just came to draw y'all's attention to the issue of the HVAC, the multiple other deferred maintenance issues at Page. And I'd like to talk to y'all a minute about how it affects my life as a parent. My wife and I both work full-time. We're lucky enough to work in town so we can shuttle our kids back and forth from school and cover these lost days because we've had multiple lost days this year due to HVAC failures. I can't even imagine the effect it has on other folks who aren't lucky enough like my wife and I to work for flexible people and kind of have the ability to run around and take care of our kids. It's a tremendous burden on us, but also the kids. You know, there's a lot lost with remote learning. It's a tremendous effect on what they learn. My son and his buddy were saying that they're really concerned about how they're going to do on their first year's mid, I guess, midsemester exams or whatever. They've been in school one day this year, this calendar year so far. They've lost three days this winter to HVAC issues. It's just tremendously sad. But hopefully you guys will do the right thing, find us some HVAC money. I'm sure y'all got some laying around somewhere. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Kathy Kruska. Welcome.
Those are some pretty tough acts to follow. Good evening to the members of the board and to our superintendent and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Kathy Kruska and I'm here as a proud grandparent of two boys who are thriving in the Guilford County schools. One in middle school at Carnaudel, the other at Grimsley High. I am here as a member of this wonderful Greensboro community so I would like to congratulate our chair, Deana Hayes, on her reelection. In my letter last month to the board, which I hope you read, I expressed my support for her leadership and I'm happy to see that her accomplishments have been recognized. So I will be thanking the entire board as we move on to some other topics. The educational environment, as even addressed here, is critically important to how our students are able to be productive and to learn. And what I would like to do is to ask all of you to recognize that there are powerful outcomes and the prioritizing of racial equity, I don't want to get lost in still all the needs that we have in terms of the physical facilities and things that we have. These issues are critical and my heart goes out to all these parents. But I would also like to ask you to continue the work that you're doing as you help them to also recognize that we need to help our students flourish regardless of whatever backgrounds they come from or whatever their circumstances are so that they can be successful. The quality of the education for our young people is received, is actually a shared responsibility, not only of the parents and the students, but also of all the community people and I'm here representing our community leaders. We have to recognize that the cost to take care of our students is going to have a return on investment for how our students are going to be able to thrive in our workplace today and in the future. It's good business decision and a sound civil practice to support their education and to financially support the faculty, staff, and administrators who are educating. We've not even heard from them. Imagine how it is for them having to teach in some of these difficult situations. As a former educator, I know how tough it can be when it's cold or it's too hot or the lights aren't working or you yourself are afraid to go out to a parking lot or to what have you. So what we need to do is to financially support these faculty and the administrators and the staff so that they can do their job to teach our students. Therefore, it's crucial that we recognize the role of our educators and it's imperative that we ensure they are compensated fairly and competitively. So with that, I'd like to conclude by saying your leadership is critical right now as evidenced by all the needs that you are being faced with in this new year. Your leadership is ensuring that our students are equipped with the critical knowledge as well as the skills to succeed academically and in life. This work is vital. And I actually stand here in support of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this concludes our public comments section of our meeting this evening. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the agenda, please.
For a second. All those in favor say aye. All right, we're now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of December 2025 meeting minutes. Personnel action report. 2425 budget amendments transfers report. 2526 Board of Education meeting schedule revision to, 2526 Board of Education meeting schedule and revision to 2425 Board of Education meeting schedule. That concludes this consent, this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Move the consent agenda.
Thank you, for a second. Second, thank you. Diane? Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Pastor? Betty?
Yes.
Deborah? David? And Kim?
Yes.
And Deana, yes. That passes unanimously. We are now at reports from the chair. Good evening and congratulations to our Grimsley High football team for earning the 4A state championship title last month. We look forward to recognizing them at an upcoming board meeting along with other fall sports champions. Students in the Northwest High Marching Band had a memorable New Year's Eve. The band traveled to Vatican City to play for the Pope as they ring in the new year. The 85 students led by band director Brian McMath played Sweet Caroline, Celebration, and God Rest You Merry Gentlemen. Congratulations to Hector Gomez, Assistant Principal at High Point Central who received a humanitarian award from the city of High Point this week for his work with the Latino community. Among his many accomplishments, Mr. Gomez established a youth-led group for Latino students, connecting them with leadership opportunities, workforce development, and other youth-led organizations across North Carolina. The District Science Fair is happening on Friday, January 17th. That's this Friday at the Greensboro Science Center. Good luck to all of our participating students who advanced to the district round after qualifying at the school level. Winners from the district fair will be announced on the 17th at 6:00 PM at Cone Elementary and will go on to the regional competition in February. The pre-K application period is now open. Children who will be four by August 31st of this year are eligible to apply. Families can access the online application at www.gilfordchildren.org. And finally, there are still spaces available for the new Visual and Performing Arts Elementary opening next fall. The Visual and Performing Arts School will transform the way students experience education, combining artistic excellence with academic achievement in a state-of-the-art facility. To learn more and express your interest, visit www.gcsnc.com/vpa. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening. Last week, we opened three new buildings for Peck, Faust, and Brooks Global Studies. I know these families and staff members are excited and want to again thank our community for voting to approve the funding that made this possible. Ribbon-cutting ceremonies for all three schools will take place later this month. You may have noticed that the GCS website has a new look to better serve our families. It's the district's first website's major update in 10 years. We encourage you to explore the site, which is still found at www.gcsnc.com and offer your feedback through the Let's Talk link. School sites will also be updated later this year. Congratulations to Rookie Teacher of the Year, Alex Holmes from High Point Central High, who has been named as a finalist for the state beginning Teacher of the Year Award. As a finalist, Alex will attend a week-long professional development session in March here in Greensboro and the winner of the award will be announced March 27th. In the wake of additional frigid temperatures and winter weather, I want to thank our maintenance team and safety team for their ongoing efforts to keep our students safe and warm. We do not take any decisions to close school or shift to remote lightly and we will always do what's in the best interest of the safety of our students and families. Please make sure you are receiving school closing notifications from our mass notification systems. If you need to update your information, you can check with your school's data manager. Finally, I want to remind everyone that schools will be closed on Monday, January 20th and in honor of the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday and on Monday, January 27th for a teacher workday. And the second semester for most students begins on Tuesday, January 28th. Thank you. This concludes my remarks and now I'll welcome Mr. Ritchie, who's going to provide us with a brief overview of a school safety update.
Come.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Oakley and board members. This presentation will cover the safety measures and training improvements GCS has made over the last year and update you on our continued deferred capital bond projects. Thank you. School safety is a top priority for GCS, having been elevated to a key component in the district's four strategic direction priorities. Strengthening health, wellness, and safety in schools. Although we're refreshed with recent updates, this slide is familiar to most of you. Tonight, we will focus on the changes since your last briefing. These 13 safety measures are key components to our school's continued safety. You will notice that the measures include both physical security and personal interactions. Physical security measures are important as they provide barriers to violence and create safe spaces for our students, staffs, and family. It is worth repeating, though, that a student's relationship with a caring and trusted adult is by far the most important component of school safety. With the expansion of the school safety office, we have been able to shift our focus from reactive to proactive measures. This focus includes improved and more frequent school safety assessments and increased training of our administrators and staff on emergency protocols and procedures, including standard response protocols, standard reunification methods, and the Say Something Anonymous reporting system. We have continued our partnership with Student Services to provide refresher training in the areas of anti-bullying training and suicide and risk and threat risk assessment. GCS had a strong threat assessment process in place, but we have now created a district-level review team for the assessments in compliance with the new state legislation. This team is managed by Dr. DeBorey, Executive Director of Mental and Behavioral Services, and me. and me. The school and district suicide risk and threat assessment processes are complemented by additional mental health supports that Dr. DeBorey has recently briefed you on. The I Love You Guys Foundation created the standard response protocols after a school tragedy in Colorado a number of years ago. The Foundation recognized the need for a common language and response for all situations. We implemented these protocols with many of our peers in 2020, with some training provided. This year, we provided comprehensive refresher training for administrators who in turn train their staff and students. We also trained our law enforcement partners in the use of these protocols. If you want to follow along, you should each have this card attached to your piece. We have issued this same card. It doesn't say board member. It says principal, assistant principal, safety, maintenance, contractor, technology, and then the schools, many of the schools have ordered them for the teachers. This can fit directly behind your ID, and you can have it with you at all times so you can see what these protocols are. So if you want to follow along, feel free to take a look at that card. A hold is used to keep students in classrooms in the event the halls or central part of the school may need to be cleared. Think of a medical emergency or a spill. This can take place in a few classrooms or the entire school, and the important piece in a hold is that teaching continues. So don't lose any time for that. A secure is when there is a danger outside of the school, such as an animal on the playground or nearby law enforcement action. All children are brought inside and stay in their classes, and teaching continues as usual. Lockdown, as you know, is the protocol used to secure classrooms to keep students quiet when a danger is within the school or focused directly at the school. Evacuate is when we need to remove children and staff from the school. The best example, of course, is a fire drill, but this could also include chemical spills in the area of a school or other emergencies along that line. Shelter is when we need to get to the safest areas of the school. Think of tornadoes and severe storms. During our trainings, each of these protocols are reviewed and expectations were outlined for students, school staff, and the appropriate response from central office staff. One additional aspect of this training is that we shared with schools the materials for families, and they were, and they are located on our website. We want to make these, sure, these protocols are known and accepted protocols to remove some of the fear and anxiety and mystery out of the process. The I Love You Guys Foundation also created what is considered the best practice method for reunification after emergencies that we will utilize if the need arises. Simple reunifications take place regularly in our schools. Early dismissals are a great example. The standard reunification method is for those critical instances we don't like to imagine, we don't want to imagine, but must be prepared for, and other types of events when our students and staff must be transported off campus to be reunified with their families. GCS has created and trained a team of a hundred central office staff members to work major reunification events. Without getting too deep into the plans, the central office staff will focus on the needs of students and staff that have been, and have been trained to handle the logistics of a complex reunification. We've also included our emergency management and law enforcement services in the region in this planning process to include identified reunification sites and resources needed at those sites. Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. We utilize the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System from the Sandy Hook Promise as our state-mandated anonymous reporting system. Say Something has a twenty-four-hour crisis center that answers texts, emails, and phone tips that are received. Principals have been trained on the process involved in the tips program. In January and February, staff and students in grades six through twelve will be trained on its proper use and the benefits of seeing something and saying something to keep our schools and their peers safe. There is a link to the Anonymous Reporting System on every front-facing page, uh, front-facing page of our website and in the bullets at the bottom of all pages, including school pages. It is provided in conjunction with the North Carolina Center for Safer Schools at no cost to GCS. Camera system improvements. We've completed our camera project, installing cameras in every school maintained on GCS property. That's over fifty-nine-hundred cameras with over twelve thousand five hundred views were installed in our schools, providing our administrators with complete coverage to their schools. These cameras provide proactive capabilities such as setting door alarms, ordering alarms, and time alarms. Every administrator has the capability of using an app on their phone to access their cameras from anywhere at any time. Some of the positive feedback we've heard from principals includes the efficiency and the time to investigate matters, the availability of views with access right on their cell phone, and the increased ability to view areas throughout their school campuses. Radio upgrades. We are proud of our new centralized radio system upgrades that run on the Guilford Metro Communication System. Transportation has all-new radios, and each school and key central office positions have portable radios as well. The radios allow buses to have direct access to their supervisors and include emergency buttons if the driver cannot get to the microphone to call for help. The radios also help us reach schools that are in areas with poor cellphone coverage. Since our radios are on the nine-one-one system, they will continue to work even in emergencies when cellphone towers become overloaded. They can be used for large pre, pre, uh, having a hard time with this word, pre-planned events as well. They also facilitate school-to-bus and school-to-school communications, again for a quicker response. This is one more layer in our communications process to ensure continuity of operations and emergencies. Next, we'll discuss deferred capital bond safety upgrades. Through the deferred capital bond, we are making major infrastructure upgrades in our schools. This graphic includes the five-year list of projects. At this time, we are working on secure vestibules, parking lot lighting, alarm system upgrades, lock replacement for classroom doors, and vape detectors in high schools and middle school bathrooms. Technology is completing classroom paging and intercom improvements as well. Our high school and middle school principals have requested vape detectors to help with the growing concern of vaping and the associated health risks. Air quality control sensors, or vape detectors as they're known, are being installed in all middle and high school bathrooms to help with this. We've completed the detector installation in all traditional high schools and most of the middle schools. We are now completing the integration of the detectors with hallway cameras to provide instant alerts with video to the principals. Obviously, there are no cameras in the bathrooms. We are upgrading all Duke Power poles from sodium yellow lights to LED lights. This increases visibility by thirty percent while reducing our monthly energy use cost. Dudley and Smith have been upgraded in the last month. As you recently heard, Page, Eastern and Northwest are scheduled, and Western, Northeast, and Grimsley are up next. Antiquated fire alarm systems and burglary panels are being upgraded as well at this time. We currently do not have a way to access all alarms remotely or from a central location. They're just that old. The upgrade will improve our capabilities and allow for faster responses and repairs. You've heard me discuss best practices several times in this presentation. Our goal is to continually upgrade our processes, procedures, and physical security to the most current best practices across the nation. With our new vestibule construction in our older schools, that is exactly what we'll be accomplishing. The vestibules utilize securely constructed windows and doors to create barriers to easy interest in, in, barrier to easy entry into our schools. What I've learned from today's presentation is not to put two words with this beginning with the same letter together in a row. Okay, so I'll, I'll work on that for the next one. Our entry areas are the primary safety point of the school. They'll include a three buzzer system and security laminated windows and doors, basically creating three checkpoints to enter into our schools. The instruction of vestibules is occurring in existing GCS schools, with the first eighteen elementary schools are in progress. And we chose elementary schools because there are not SROs on campus at elementary So this is a brief review, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Diane?
Okay, on page three. Will parents understand these symbols, or does it, does it get explained to them?
So at this time, we're counting on the staff to send that home with the students. They were given those materials. They are on our website as well, but we have not held any parent training.
Okay, I, I just, not so much parent training, just, you know, will they understand these symbols and what, what the significance is, like the way you just explained us that hold means stay in the classroom?
Yes, so they are posted up in many of the schools, and many of the schools have sent this home, and again, they are in our website. One of the things that we do with communications, because typically with hold, well, actually with each of these, we send a message home to the family through Connect Ed, and we explain what that means in that message.
Okay, and then my next question is, how do you, if you can tell me, how do you decide on the reunification sites that you choose?
So we've worked on sites in our different regions. I don't want to get into where those sites are, obviously, because that would hinder our, hinder its performance, but we chose different regions throughout the county because we are six hundred and forty-four square miles and needed more than just one location.
Okay, and well, and part of the reason I ask is, is because I'm familiar with R.J. Reynolds and the site that they chose, and for me, that site was the site of a grocery store, a retail, you know, site, and not necessarily the easiest in terms of traffic and, and that kind of stuff. And so, you know, in watching that, I just wonder, you know, are we being, you know?
We have taken that into serious consideration. Yes, ma'am.
All right, all right. I'm trying to do your job.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, and then page seven. Who, you said that there's, the radio goes to someone at the school, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a specific person that's designated?
The principal.
Particularly during the time that the buses are, are moving, because the buses are only moving morning and afternoon, right?
Right. The principal is to carry, the principal is to assign that or carry that throughout the day so that it can be used for any time during that day. And so typically, it is a principal or assistant principal that is carrying it within the school.
Okay, and then on page nine, um, do you, have you have felt, or has there been a, a sense of, of invasion of privacy? Even though I know you said the cameras are not in the bathroom, but still, you've got something in the bathroom that will indicate to an adult that something is going on in the bathroom that possibly shouldn't be going on in the bathroom, right?
Right. And so we do not feel that's an invasion of privacy because it is addressed once the bathroom is cleared and no one goes into the bathroom during that time period. That's the main reason for the alert, and it's no different than if a principal was walking by the bathroom, smelled smoke coming out of the bathroom. And it's addressed in that same manner.
Okay, I mean, I just.
Certainly. No, I appreciate the question.
You know, I, I just don't want someone to say, hey, you know, I was in the john and they didn't, you know, respect my, my privacy.
Understood.
And then I just want to make a note of thank you for the better lighting out in front of this facility. Somebody heard that we needed to light this, and I understand that this is temporary because we won't be here, but, you know, for the time that we're here, and it's not just for us, but it's for staff who works late and stuff like that, so I appreciate the effort to do that.
I would say you're welcome, but John Simmons and his crew beat me to that, and I had nothing to do with it. They did, and so I will pass that thank you on. They deserve it. They're the ones who did that work.
Okay, well, I appreciate it because I, I think Dr. Monk and I had had several conversations about, you know, brightening it up out there, so I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the update, and before I go through this, also thank you very much for the video that you put out about how GCS makes the decisions to close schools. I think in the past week in particular, that's been extremely important to be able to share with people so that families understand that we are a very large county with a lot of different things. I know my neighborhood, I still have inch-thick ice on my roads even tonight when I left to come here, so even though your roads may be okay, everybody else's may not. So thank you for the information sharing.
Yes, ma'am.
So the Say Something system, can you explain, I'd just love to hear some basic statistics around that. How much is that being used? Is it being used by students, parents, teachers, a combination of all of that?
So we have just adopted this. We switched because we were using what was called Crisis Go, because we had been awarded it in a grant right prior to this system coming out by the state. So we had used it until that grant ran out. So what I can tell you is that we've received two critical notifications from them this year, meaning something went to their location saying it was a life safety issue, a threat to safety at one school or another, and in both cases, they were used, used very quickly. So that's why we're, in this next, in this next two months, we'll be training all the, and this is really key, the sixth through twelfth graders, you're not even, you don't only train them in how to use it, you train them in how not to use it as well. And so that reduces and really, I can't say that eliminates, because we are talking high school children, but it reduces the number of false complaints significantly and handles that so that we can handle any complaints that do come in quickly.
And will there be consequences for students who might use that to do false reporting on purpose?
There, there are, in fact, that also falls under, not only because of the reporting system in the state and the state law, that reflects not only school consequences, but it also opens up legal consequences as well.
Excellent, and that will be shared with.
That is a reportable issue that we have to make to law enforcement.
And as they get trained on how to use the system, they'll be made aware of that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Excellent. I know the, the camera system, I've heard great feedback from principals about being able to have access to that on their phones. I think that's wonderful, wonderful, and I had, I think, just one other question. Oh, you know, this, the entry points and vestibules, I don't know that there's a, a perfect answer to this, and I know that the answer really is that this is a human issue. I'm still seeing issues where I'll go to schools, and maybe it's honestly just people recognize my face on the camera, but very often, I'll push a button to get buzzed into somewhere, and nobody says, you know, who are you, what are you here for? It's just buzz, let you into the building. And so I wonder what types of things can continue to be done to try to reduce the number of times that that type of thing happens.
So training is going to be the number one piece, and then basically being consistent with that training and that. So on the three buzzer system, it does create a way that you have to come in and be let purposely in three separate times. So it helps eliminate that probability, and yes, most likely you are recognized by many of your schools.
That, that's certainly what I hope is the case, of course. Yeah, but obviously, we want to be sure that we're protecting our kids and our teachers and securing access.
Well, the thing is that the parents are also recognized, but.
Sure.
Parents can have a bad day the same way the rest of us can, and so that's why the three, the three buzzer system is what we're using so that we can make sure that parent isn't having a bad day before we let them into our school.
Excellent. Thank you very much for all of this. This is critical, critical, and I love hearing the updates, so thanks.
Thank you. Deborah?
Can you give us any details on the upgrades coming to Page's lighting, just for the comfort of the parents that were here earlier, please?
So as we have now, it has been scheduled by Duke Power, but unfortunately, Duke Power's work crew that does that is also the crew that responds to the outages due to ice storms and snow storms, which is why we've been delayed. So with that, that's where the lighting update is, but it is scheduled for this month. We're hoping that they get to it this month.
Okay, and that's updating what we currently have in place?
Yes, so what it is, is every light pole that is a Duke Power pole, which are the majority of our light poles, even in many of our High Point schools, that yellow sodium light that you see out here, that so low light, that's what's being replaced. It's being replaced with LED, which is that bright incandescent light that is roughly thirty, is going to immediately improve the lighting by about thirty percent. On the bright side, it will also save us energy costs, so.
On the bright side.
Oh, wow. I wish I could say I was that creative. I'm not.
And to the question earlier, while I've been at Page several times, I have not been while it's dark that I can remember. Is there lighting in the student parking lot?
There is lighting. I, I'm not going to say that it's sufficient if a parent is saying that it's not. So it's something that we'll check out and make sure.
Okay, so we'll get Duke out there and we'll check it out. Thank you.
We're going to listen to the parents when they complain to us, and we're going to follow up on it.
Absolutely.
Betty?
Hey, thank you very much for the report. I know some time ago, not telling my age, they used to have something like Crime Stopper, their kids received some type of stipend for. Their kids received some type of stipend for a report that is credible. Is there anything like that now?
There is not at this time. Um, the school district, back in the day, I was actually over the police department when that was here. The school board did not want to pursue that and I understand some of the reasons behind that. And so that is currently not an issue that we have, we've done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That might be the last one. Um, thank you so much, Chief, for this report. Vice Chair Jenkins and I were at a meeting at Barber Park with Chief Thompson.
Yes.
And the series of meetings that they're starting, um, just in response to the, I think, six homicides and just the, you know, not even the first month, um, you know, of the year. And I didn't hear a lot about, you know, sometimes you hear things start in school or there was some conversation going on, so I didn't hear a lot of that. And I know at some point we'll get more information on just, um, you know, this is about sort of facilities and the environment and some of those things. But is there anything that, um, you know, we're, you know, just sort of tracking? Um, it was really interesting because, you know, um, people are wired a certain way around crime. And, you know, the chief was saying, no, we don't see any trends or patterns here. It was just, um, you know, um, it was really good information, but I think it was, you know, for a lot of people who are used to, you know, making certain assumptions about how things are happening, it just wasn't there. So I wasn't sure. Somebody did come up to me and wanted to have a conversation around, um, some partnership with the school and law enforcement. But, um, is there anything else that, you know, you might know, or not know, but that you might want to share?
Well, so, um, in his, in his talk about the six homicides in, in 12 days, one of the things that was mentioned that was drugs are a nexus in four of those six. Um, and that was one of the things that he stated. And drugs and all can end up in neighborhoods throughout our county. It's really non-discriminatory, um, drugs are, in, in, in my purview. So one of the things that we look for is we try to share with, or we try to stay on top of, trends that are in our neighborhoods because our schools are neighborhood-based. So what we try to do is get the information from the police department of areas where they are seeing neighborhood conflicts because they can move into the schools and we want to prevent that. So one of the things that I, I will sing the praises of our SROs on is that they, our SROs are based in the schools, but they stay in touch with the community officers that are in the area around our schools so that we can keep a handle on and make sure that nothing that, that boils over in a neighborhood boils over into our schools. And so that's the one area that we do pay special attention to because it's one that we can control. Right? We do know where our neighborhoods are. We do know where our folks are. So we do try to control that. As far as for the rest of the trends, um, this is a personal opinion, and I'll throw that out there first and foremost, is with the proliferation of handguns over the last few years and with the mental health issues that we have around all of the changes from the last five years of stress that our communities have been put through. I think that we are quicker to anger. And if we have the tools for that anger, then they can be expressed in ways that are deadly rather than, um, not. And so that's not about schools, that's about our community. And the one thing that we talk about regularly, we are a microcosm of our community and we need, need to understand that and pay attention to it. And that's one place where I will turn around and again, not only the SROs and the community officers, our principals understand that and our teachers understand that. And it's discussed, we don't shy away from it, um, as a school, so that we can stay safe.
I appreciate that. There was, um, I was really glad to see that just, uh, you know, really positive alliance, but there were probably 15, 18 neighborhood associations there minimally. I mean, the room, it was really standing room only. But people were there very supportively, wanting information. And, um, our neighborhood resource officers Fitzgerald, Harris, and Alston, you know, have been just really wonderful just in their, you know, communication with the neighborhood associations. And I'm just wondering if there's any, any communication between neighborhood association resource liaisons and our SROs or something like that? But I know we'll probably have more coordinated work going on in the future.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, nothing else? You, Chief, we are now at, um, committee reports. And the first and only committee report is the policy committee report. Board Member Bellamy Small. I have asked, I'm sorry to pull item D, but you can just go ahead and go through your list and then we'll pull that aside after voting.
Are you talking about for action?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, I was going to the next page. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, at, at our December 18th meeting, the policy committee voted to publish five policy recommendations for 30-day comment period from January 14th to February 13th. The policy revisions are related to legal updates and facility, uh, facilities naming. Policy, policies 1311 slash 4003 parental notification withholding consent. Three, three thirty, mm, 3420 student promotion and accountability. 4023 723 pregnancy and parent, parenting students and employees. And 8305 federal grant administration administrations have been revived, revised to reflect changes to state law and federal guidance. Policy 9300 naming and renaming of facilities has been revised by the policy committee to clarify the process for the naming of new and existing facilities. The committee recommends these changes to ensure that name, the naming process for new facilities are completed in a timely fashion and to provide clear direction for community-driven naming and renaming process that may occur twice a year. At our December meeting, the committee also reviewed its activities for 2024. And so I'm very proud to, um, you know, have this document. If you have not seen it, uh, that you get an opportunity to see, uh, what the policy committee's activities have been for, uh, for 2024. We exceeded, uh, 2023. Uh, we had 37 policies that we, uh, did in, in, uh, 2023 and we have done, uh, 41, uh, in 2024. So I want to, uh, thank the committee members, which is, uh, Ms. Napper and, uh, Ms. Jenkins, for the meetings that we, you know, uh, have had to juggle between, um, looking, making sure that we had the right time. When the time, uh, what, what did it do? Did it go back or did it come forward? Whatever it did. Uh, you know, yeah, so, and other things that we've had to juggle to make sure that we tried to stay on schedule. I also want to thank the staff members, Dr. K, uh, Dr. Stevens, Dr. Lewis. Who am I missing? Dr. K? Lee Brown and our-
Kim Hett.
Kim, okay, for, um, working with me and working with us to make sure that we had materials and, uh, to give us guidance as well as, uh, you know, helping us to, to work through. But, um, I'll pass this down if you haven't seen it because it goes into more detail about what we did do this year. And I think it's important because, you know, our policies is what guides us and tries to keep us legal. Is that not right? Uh, Madam Attorney? Okay, and so the better our, the stronger our policies, I know who I forgot. The lady who came, yes. What's her last name?
Open is the person with my office who has a master's in public policy from Duke and is marvelous at policy.
Right, so, so those are the folks who have worked with us to do, uh, the, the policies. So, uh, I hope that you'll take a chance to look at that. And, uh, I'm not sure who's going to be on the policy committee because I haven't heard, uh, what that, what's supposed to happen for 2025 yet. As a reminder, you, uh, you can view, you can view the policy revisions in detail in the attachment to the policy committee report on the, uh, board agenda. And they will be featured on the GCS website and social media channels after this meeting. These policies, um, policy recommendations will come back to the board for consideration in our March meeting after the public has a chance to give us input. And I can't emphasize enough that we do look at public, uh, input. We look at the number of comments and what those comments say. So if folks feel like, you know, we don't hear them, we, we do. And so, uh, we do appreciate, uh, anybody taking the time to look at them and then give us some feedback as to what you would like for us to do. That's the committee report for 2024.
Thank you. Any questions? David, you have a question?
About a policy that wasn't named, the contracts with the board. That's, okay, we'll get to that then.
I do have a question around policy 9300. Says the guidelines for naming or renaming schools or facilities. Number three, it says names of individuals may be considered after they have been deceased for five years, except upon unanimous approval of the board. So what does the except mean? That it means the whole thing, that the board can decide that someone isn't deceased or that it's less than five years or all the above?
All the above, because when we tried to look at, there is no clear direction that, uh, previous boards have taken. We've been all over the place as far as naming, uh, you know. So what Dr. K and the staff did was try to look at best practices, uh, across the board, looking at other districts and then trying to come up with something that might give us guidance because we really didn't have any. And so, you know, it's still, I mean, it's up to this board to decide whether, you know, you want to do this or not because like I said, if you look, we've been all over the place as far as how we've done, uh, namings. And we've, and sometimes not this board, but sometimes the board hasn't followed any policy. They just, woo, did it. So, um, and I think, uh, what Ms. Troutman said is that this was one area where there really wasn't a lot of policy guidance to say what is wrong, right, whatever, you know. But it's, it's what we feel at the moment of what, you know. I mean, you've sat here enough whenever folks have come and we thought we were going in one direction and after this place being full, oop, somebody said, nope, let's go in a different direction, so. But this is to try to help us when somebody says, well, you know, you, what, what did you follow? Hopefully, because I think if you look at what we had and what we are recommending, we've increased this, uh, in, in several ways. As far as trying to look at when the building is not, um, on our property, you know, and we have to look at having a relationship with another entity as far as respecting, you know, who has, who has the right. You see what I'm saying? So we've tried to look at all those kinds of things.
I do, I appreciate it. I was just looking for clarification and this might be a question for Jill. Should it be unanimous or majority approval?
That's totally up to you guys.
Okay.
You know, they're very different concepts, so I, I, I wasn't privy to the conversation of why it got to be unanimous, but I assume what they're saying is-
I've started something.
Because of the, so generally speaking, why you don't, um, name buildings after someone who is still alive is that you give time for their reputation to settle so that you don't find yourself in an uncomfortable position in the future over Enron Stadium or whatever other kinds of things you can think of for examples. And so generally speaking, um, public groups that require only posthumous naming, assume there can be no embarrassment to come because that person has been vetted. Um, and so that, they may have said unanimous because if there's somebody who has concern that that might not be the case, it is more of a risk to name a building after someone who's still building a legacy than it is someone who is not.
Yeah, um, we've had that discussion over the decades, um, around that. I remember when Joe Stafford would come and, and, um, his Edward, Edward R. Murrow. But I also, it was, it was, um, I can't tell you what an honor it was to meet Sylvia Mendez. I know, you know, Mel Swan, and so it's, uh, you know, I, I think, you know, if somebody does something, you know, that we want, you know, it's, it's rare. We haven't, you know, um, had that, that situation occur, but I think there's a, a way to address that if, if that did happen, so. But I appreciate the discussion. Deborah, then Betty, and then Kim.
Well, and that discussion, that suggestion actually came from my end, um, you know, as we tried to execute the policy and we found out that for the rate at which we're naming new schools, the old policy just was not workable. And now in a couple of spots, we're kind of in lurch here. You know, Elizabeth did her due diligence and brought forward, and, uh, Dr. K also, uh, brought forward policies from numerous large districts from all, all along the Eastern Seaboard. And, um, my actual initial suggestion was to follow many of them, which said no naming for living people, um, at all, period. And then, you know, it was brought up experiences like meeting Sylvia Mendez, things like that. And we didn't think that was a proper direction to go. Um, and that's why we came back with the unanimous suggestion was because we didn't feel at the extreme end of saying no naming for people was appropriate when there are people who have earned the right and, and the, um, maybe the qualification to have a facility so named. But there again, at to Jill's point, you also need to know who it is exactly that you're naming for. And also to Diane's point, that we even have the right to do it in the first place. Checking the legalities behind that, that there's been another spot where Elizabeth's done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Betty, and then Kim?
Yeah, um, my concern is, um, five years as far as being deceased. And when we just named a school, um, from Sylvia Mendez just, just this year. But there's a great area there where it speaks about, um, about the, being individual. You can look at it two different ways and I have consulted, um, Elizabeth and another attorney. And it's a great area because in fact, you can look at the name of the school by being named by a person, but also, uh, in a person's still living. But also is by the company, name, a dance company or vocalist or whatever by the company. So a person can say, well, that person is still living, but it's not named by that person. It's named by the company. So that's a great area there.
Thank you. Kim?
I just wanted to know, what was the recommendation? Are we changing the, that policy based on what we want? Or is this coming from one of the recommendations from the North Carolina School Board Association? Like what was their recommendation as well? I do think that five years is a lot and I don't think it should matter if we decide or if the community has organized, what I've seen. And they've brought the recommendations and we pretty much have followed the community, um, when recommendations have been made. So I don't, I don't even understand the five years, why we would even add that to the policy.
Diane, did you want to-
Because we, we also have, you know, applications now out there. Are we going to ask people to go back and follow a new policy? I do think that anyone who's already submitted names for anything, they are not under a new policy. They shouldn't have to go back and do that work over again.
Yeah, thank you, Kim. Diane, did you want to respond?
Okay, uh, I'm going to defer to Dr. K because she was the one, if you don't mind, because she was the one who- Question one was about the School Board Association.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. So the question about the school board's association recommendation, their policy, policy to lead the schools recommendation has, um, about five different sentences in it and it's very short. So we did look at that, uh, with the committee, but what you see reflected in the draft was, um, based on a discussion that the committee had in November. And then in December, we brought back a draft that reflected the desires of the committee around some specific questions that we knew were coming up in the facilities naming committee. So, um, like Ms. Bellamy Small said, there were some- So, um, like Ms. Bellamy Small said, there were s- some questions about, um, what kinds of names or how, how long a person might need to be if we name things after living people or not living people. And, uh, we brought samples from other districts around the, uh, in the Council of Great City Schools, in our peer districts in North Carolina, and the committee looked at those options. Um, and the draft that we brought back was based on the desires of the committee from that November discussion.
And, and I did ask, uh, Dr. K, and I don't know if, if they've had time to ask, to help you, us understand what we have done in the past to actually give us a list of na- of, uh, our schools, you know, and, and what has been named for living people, what has been named for women, what has been named for, uh, areas, so like, uh, northeast, you know, and, and if you look at it again, as I said earlier, it's all over the place. There, there hasn't, there's, there's no, like, say, you know, that you can look and say, oh, we named, uh, uh, four of our schools for people, uh, or for dead people, living people, whatever that, we've been all over the place. If, if you look at what previous boards' patterns, uh, have been. So, you know, I think as Jill said, you know, it's really the will of the board, but we've at least tried to give you something as some guidelines, um, if we choose to follow them.
Thank you. Lynda?
I was one of the ones that requested this to be reviewed. Number one, um, there was no procedure as to who knew, all right? It never was put out for public knowledge. Uh, the board would bring it up, so there would be no, uh, rebuttal or, um, concerns brought up for anybody that would be presented necessarily because it would basically, the committee would bring it up and that would be the name proposed and that would be that. So, you know, I had a real problem with, um, we used to bring it up and people put in suggestions back in our day. I know you know that, I know Howard Cobble was put up a lot back in, um, so, you know, the public had input and could suggest something. Um, there again, the policy, the old policy said, because I was, I had to ask, um, Marshall Manson, you know, it stated that the people would be deceased and we somewhere got along around eventually where we didn't follow that policy. Um, so I have a problem with, you know, we're, we're not sticking with that because it was in there and he's like, well, we don't do that anymore. We, we make exceptions, okay?
There was a revision, um, that led to that though. It wasn't just the board chose not to follow the policy, the, there was a revision to the policy that changed that, yeah.
Okay. But I still believe that, you know, whether it is a company, companies can have, do something very horrible and have a bad reputation. Whether it's an individual, we have seen individuals that have been outstanding and then things not be so outstanding. Um, so, you know, I think you're safer with, because, you know, once a person is deceased for, um, you know, does it have to be five years? I don't know that has to be five years. Hopefully, what, if there's any skeletons in the closet, they will come out within a reasonable amount of time, a year or two. Um, but to be consistent, um, it also, if someone's deceased, their life work has been established, all right? And I think that warrants more than someone that is living that hasn't matured to that level. I mean, these people have been around for most of them, you know, for an extreme, so I definitely agree with the policy and so that's where I'm at with it.
Thank you. Diane?
Madam Chair, but I would just remind the board, and I don't know how many years ago it happened, but, and she's still living, because we looked at how many living people we have named schools for. So you have, uh, Christine Jones Green, you have, uh, Doc Kearns, um, you have, uh, yeah, okay. And so, I mean, these folks, I mean, I'm assuming, I don't even know when those schools were named for them.
Mm-hmm.
But, so obviously, previous boards, uh, either, like I said, didn't follow or decided that they didn't need to follow their own policy because we do have these, uh, I mean, and, and, I mean, Christine Gina, I mean, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Green, she's still puttering around. Um, so is Doc. Uh, they're still, you know, puttering around. And so would we, would we not feel that having named those schools for those particular women was not justified? I, I don't think so. Uh, I, I think we would, if, if somebody came before us today and said, okay, take the living people off of these school buildings, we would be hard pressed to remove, uh, I don't know much about Ms. Henderson, but I mean, obviously, you know, our superintendent is a product of, so, you know, we put ourselves in kind of a place as far as, so I think, you know, let, let, can we just kind of put this out for comments, see if there's some other brains that have some ideas and then, you know, bring it, you know, it'll come back to us and then we can, I mean, we spent, you know, I think somebody said in the November meeting, we spent most of our meeting a long time talking about this. So this is not, this was not one of those, you know, lightweight kind of things. We gave this a lot of discussion, both in the November and the December meeting and staff spent a lot of time trying to hear us and come with what you see here today. So this has been a long process of trying to, you know, come up with something that made sense.
I think what Dr. Oakley said, and I think what I'm reading here is that there was an amendment because you have a policy here that says we can name it after living people. So it, it, right here says we could do that. It's not like the board decided not to do that. The policy said we could and we did. So it wasn't, it wasn't that, you know, we just had a policy that said we couldn't and we just did it anyway. So, so that's already here. My, my concern is, is that I'm okay if we don't have a particular path. I think that's really organic, that we've got some compass directional schools, if people, it's an option, if people, and we've, we've all been so moved in touch by coaches and mentors and former principals. Um, and so I, I just think it opens up an opportunity and they're all community driven. They're all driven by nomination committees and people outside doing that. It's not the, the board hasn't necessarily brought names forward, um, but that's come from the community. And so I, I, I'm just trying to figure out what the dilemma or problem has been and it seems rather minor if there was one.
No, it's, it's as, as stepping away from the policy role and stepping into the chair position of the naming committee, the policy that we have was not functional and it didn't necessarily have to, anything to do with what we were naming the buildings so much as the timeline in which it took to name the buildings and making sure that communication with the community and with the schools was adequate before we chose a name. That was the basis on which this policy was, was revised. The five-year clause in there with the, um, unanimous vote to name a building after a living person is tended, is intended to almost be an override, primarily to be considered our compass points or the functionality of the school. You know, we've gotten so in the habit already of calling the VPA, the VPA. Um, and, uh, the other thing is, is that what, to separate a few things out for you, what we're looking at is the naming of the actual facility in its entirety. Um, when you talk about, uh, yeah, naming a football field for a coach or a field house for a coach, anything of that nature, it follows a different part of the policy and that can be done at any point in time with any living person there same way on unanimous vote of the board. That's, that, it is, it's a different, um, different stream in that policy. If you read it, it's in, in its entirety to rename a portion of a building or a location in a building as opposed to the entirety of the facility. But what prompted the rewrite was the fact that for what we are doing as far as building all of the new facilities that we have, the old policy was not functional and that is how we have come down to the wire with these naming, uh, options and we're getting ready to open all these new facilities and we're panicking and scrambling because we don't have it in place. And that's what this is in time, designed to prevent.
Yeah, I think a process and a timeline is great. I just, you know, if, if I'm, you know, running for school board and one of the things that I want to be part of my legacy in a four-year term is to support the community's, um, you know, naming of a school after pastor so-and-so or, you know, um, you know, coach so-and-so. But you have to wait five years after the person is deceased. I, I just think it's, um, you know, I, I think that there's still a, a, a process here that is, again, community driven, um, that it doesn't, and, and even unanimous, unanimous approval, I would either make an amendment or ask it to go back to the committee for that to be by majority approval of the board. Um, and that, um, or even to take it out that they have to be deceased for five years. You know, we, we just haven't had a pattern or a problem that there are people that, I mean, we, we have way in the past, you know, um, and, and as we think about Swan and former ACOG, uh, under those situations, but those weren't part of this process. Um, so I just think we're doing something that we haven't had a, we're putting something in place, addressing a problem we haven't had. And I think that there is a way to handle that if it becomes a problem and we just go back and say, you know, if this is some scandalous thing that's happened and we, we read, you know, we have a process for being able to rename. I just think that this is a, a bit of a reach, um, and, and very restrictive.
And you're, I mean, you're certainly welcome to.
Long time deceased.
You're certainly welcome to send it back to policy. Um, but the flip side to that is, um, sorry Diane, uh, but the flip side to that is, you know, to your point, we have seen it happen, um, and now we have Josephine, Josephine Boyd Boulevard, which I, um, myself, uh, thought that was a fantastically appropriate change and I loved it. Um, but the flip side to this is at the rate that we reconsider policy, or what are we at every fifteen to twenty years, um, do we borrow the trouble?
Well, then I'd like to, to make an amendment that we take out unanimous and put majority and maybe just not put a period of time that they've been deceased. I mean, five years.
Well, Madam Chair, would that not be appropriate once it's come back after it's been, because all we're doing now.
Well, usually we just vote when they come back.
Right, but that would.
You don't usually vote on the report though, on this, at this stage.
Right, but when they come back after thirty days, we usually just vote.
But, but the change could be made then because that's whenever you are voting on the policy itself.
But we just usually vote yes or no.
But you don't have to.
Exactly.
If, if, if you wanted to make an amendment at that point in time, that would be the appropriate place to do it, Madam Chair. I'm not trying to.
I hear you. I hear you.
Okay, all right, okay.
You're just going to deal with it at some point, now or later. I know you don't, don't want to come back to committee.
But we also, we also have some, some, we, we need for this to go out for thirty-day comment.
That's fine.
Because we already are going to be behind as far as when we actually, um, we've got some, some, some namings that are in the opera that need to be taken care of. But I will say, one of the things hopefully that we did put in this policy, I don't know if you saw that, is where now with any new school, there will be, it will be triggered that the naming process starts in a different place. We're not waiting until the school has been constructed.
I hear you.
So we did, um, uh, Dr. Monk, help me out here, we did put that in, in, in this new policy.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Um, Lynda and then Kim.
I'm just going to say, I had a real problem with the changes and the process of the policy. I was told that I could not ask questions prior to it going out, which we have just had a bunch of questions, okay? I mean, I quit voting on policies because I was not allowed to ask any questions prior to the public. So now we're saying, oh, we can simply modify it and you can ask all the questions you want about it, but had I tried that just, I don't know, a year ago, uh, under the rules of the, and this is not Diane, this was under one.
I was getting ready to say, because if you were coming to a policy committee.
No, this was under Winston McGregor.
But under my, my leadership on policies.
And changed all the policies.
When people come to the meeting.
This is Winston McGregor.
Okay, well, just make sure you make that clear.
I'm saying it right now.
All right, okay.
I'm saying it. But you called me down, I don't know how many times publicly about not allowing me to ask any questions on these policies. And I refused for an extended period of time to vote on any, and I kept trying to explain to Diane, it wasn't her, she's doing a great job. It was a problem with the process that cut me out of asking. And now I'm having heartburn over the fact that you as the chair can ask any of these questions and it's okay and you can change it all right here and there. So I'm just making sure, you know, let's make sure we're consistent on how we're going to handle this, that the, that has been, and I have been told, the only reason I don't ask is because I have to make a, the superintendent is very kind to, you know, if I have any questions about policy in my private meeting, I can get my answers. Diane has improved her process where she names all the, um, because it used to be, hey, they're just going out and it's numbered fifteen twenty-five, fifteen eighty-eight and ninety-four, okay? That's the, what was going on, all right? So now Diane is very methodical about listing the policies, listing why they're being done, and she's doing a great job, all right? So, you know, the policy is on the committee is that it comes, it goes out, you get public, they get public comment and only then are we allowed to make comments.
Well, that, that hasn't been my experience, but I hear you because I, I remember meeting after meeting that you're saying that the public doesn't know what's going on while Diane Bellamy Small has been the chair and that we're not getting feedback and comments on those kind of things. I said, I just said that I'm talking about it now because when it comes back for a vote, we vote on it. So I'm just saying the same thing. That's why we're talking about it now because when we bring it back for a vote, that we vote on that. And that's the instruction that we've received from the people that we brought in about our retreats, about how we handle our meetings. So I just said the very same thing for myself, that I'm talking about it now because we, when we bring it back, that's when we vote, not talk about it.
I'm well aware of it. We need to go back and review some meetings. I'll just say that.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, since I have been the chair, anyone who's come to the public, uh, policy meeting, I've acknowledged them, uh, uh, because the person that used to sit in your chair, he came, he still comes to every meeting. But, you know, when he was a board member, you know, and we've had other pub, just people from the public come. So, uh, I, I think that I, I can't, I can't fix what happened before. But, okay, but yeah, but, but because of you, uh, that's why I became more, you know, made sure that, uh, I, I did list the why and the what and that. So, uh, so you have been heard, at least in my trying to make it not just about you, but so that anyone who might have a question about what that policy is, that they got more than a number, they got more than a title, we told them what it was, when, where and how. So hopefully we can move on from there.
Thank you. Uh, Kim?
Yes, thank you, um, again. My question was not answered definitively, that whatever names have been presented to the naming committee, they do not have to go back and do work if we change the policy because they follow the procedure that is part of our naming for the community to bring us a name. Will they, we cannot make them go back and say, well, now this name is no longer eligible.
Whatever policy is in place at the time you take the vote is the policy that would apply.
Okay. Lynda?
The problem with the way the policy is, only those in the know, the public does not know that these schools are being named, especially, or when they're being named. So those people that know that are more in the close proximity, know that a school, when a school is going to be proximately done and have an advantage to bring a nomination. Where the policy changed is that the public knows, so they have an opportunity and have an opportunity to know what names are being put forth so they can, because that whole process got somehow gone. So the public, basically people are bringing nominees that are in the know and the public has no clue that these, that these na- these schools are up for, are being considered for naming and therefore there really is no public input. There's people that are in the know that are bringing names, whereas it should be the community that, and the full community of the, everyone that should be allowed to participate in this, not just, you know, those few people. So I think the process now is, is that we're going to notify the public, from what I understand, that this particular school, we are considering names for this particular school. Anybody can bring forth a name and then those names will be evaluated by the naming committee and then brought back to, and maybe they'll put up two to vote on or maybe they'll put up one to vote on. I don't know how. I don't know how that's gonna work. But the public's been cut out of the process, basically, at this point, and I, we need them put back in.
Thank you, Betty.
Okay, I disagree with the public being cut out of the process, because with the neighborhood from District 7, there's about four or five different community meetings that's held monthly, and each committee in the community know about the naming of the school in that, in that community. So, the world doesn't know, Gilbert County doesn't know, but I can assure you, in the community know about the naming of the school and also know that the school is being built. Thank you.
And just-
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, you know, I mean, we do have the application for naming is on the website, is that correct, Dr. Oakley?
The form?
Yeah.
Yeah, this policy even makes that easier, just the, the public nomination process.
Right. So, so, and, and just to say that, that I don't know who the know is, but the know is the community, because the folks who, who, who put the applications, like I know for the New Performance Arts School, you know, it was, folk came to me and said, how do we, you know, do the process? And I sent them, I sent them to, to Dr. Nolan, to, to Ms. Nolan, to get the application and do so. The community that, it doesn't affect all communities. I mean, it depends on where the school is being built and, you know, what is the interest there. I mean, it's just like, when we looked at a policy, we, like, again, we haven't, the old policy or the, or if this becomes a new policy, it's like, we, we're opening two schools that we didn't even talk about and we could have, because they were being rebuilt, renaming them, something else. But we're keeping Faust, and I didn't even know who Faust was. I mean, they told me, Faust was somebody who was at UNCG, I believe. And of course, I knew who Peck was, but, you know, we didn't even, and Claxton, we didn't even consider, and we could have, if you read what our policy said. We did not have to continue the, yeah, the current names of those schools. So, like I said, you know, this is like a beehive, you know? You decide whether you want to reach in there and get the honey or get stone. And so, that's where we are.
All right. Thank you. We are now at action items. All right, Diane?
Oh, wait, do we have to move to, to take those to 30-day comment?
No.
Okay, all right.
That's just Dr. Policy.
We can do calendars first.
Calendars? That's under action items.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah. Oh, I got you, I got you. I was going to policy. Okay, thank you. I'm looking at A, they all look like policies to me. All right, calendars.
It's just a motion, is there a motion?
All right.
Madam Chair, I move the, the, item A to approve the 2026, 2027, 2027, 2028 traditional academic calendar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Sure.
Second.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I clarify? You have to pick, we need to pick either A, B, or C of either year, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, I meant A, that's why, because it's, it had an A up here, I thought that was the A. If that's not the A, then A. I, I'm moving A.
My apologies, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, David?
Aye.
Deborah?
Aye.
Betty? Yes. Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes, but it's gonna be a long time between April 6th and May 30th. But yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes, thank you.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. We are now policy, I mean, item B, policy 1510, 427270, school safety.
Okay, I make a motion to adopt the revision to policy 1510/427270, school safety as, as presented.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, David?
Aye.
De- Deborah?
Yes.
Betty? Yes. Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. Item C?
Make a motion to adopt the new policy of 6400/8430, procurement of goods and services as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, David?
Aye.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Linda? Is item C?
C.
Procurement.
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. And item E, we'll come back to item D. Item E?
I make a motion to adopt the revisions of policy 8100, budgeting and fiscal management as presented.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you. David?
Aye.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. We're now at item D, and David, I will turn to you.
Yes, thank you. This policy titled Contracts With The Board states at the beginning that the Board of Education is the sole entity authorized to execute formal contracts. Now, you know, if that's just signing, okay, but the implication's a bit more. In A, underneath the second paragraph, there's an exception to this. Unless otherwise prohibited by statute or regulation, the superintendent or designees authorized to enter into contracts or approve amendments to contracts, which really is change orders for architectural, engineering, surveying, or construction management at-risk services for less than $500,000, and all other contracts for services for less than We're in the middle of a program of expansion, if you will, building new buildings, making big changes. A lot of big contracts out there. And I would ask Ms. Wilson to correct me if anything I say is wrong, okay? Because it, well, it could be. But there's a bidding process, and all the bidders have the opportunity to research the contract, look at the specifications, figure out what they should be bidding. They will not know what the other people are bidding, and the bids are opened, sealed bids at a certain time and place, and it's fair. When you get change orders, they basically happen for one or two reasons. One, there's something that you really couldn't figure out in advance, something that maybe is hidden within walls or just not knowable. Or, they really haven't done a good job, and their bid was a bit sloppy, and I know they're coming in with a, a change order. This proposed policies as the superintendent basically can decide these, up to $500,000, and then it would come to the board. I understand previously, the superintendent basically could get any change order, sign off on any change order, and that was just the way, the way it was. I'd like to get a board discussion about this, because we're entering into these contracts. I think if some entity, contracting entity comes back and says, you know, we, we want a change order here for $300,000, I think that's something the board might be interested in. And what's the basis for that? So, you know, I, I would be interested in hearing what the board members think about this. I would think, instead of 500,000, maybe it should be 250, something like that. You know, you want to give your superintendent some latitude, simply to keep projects moving. But I think it's good that the board be informed, understand the process of building a building, you know, the ins and outs, and, yeah. So I'm not making a motion at this time, I'm asking for a discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry. Julius and then Linda.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for that question. This policy in particular is really talking about contracts with the board. We have a different policy that talks about change orders, and that's in 9030.
Well, the way, the, excuse me, an amendment to a contract is a change order.
Correct.
By any other name. So, you know, this is, this encompasses change orders the way it's written.
Correct. And then it talks about 9030, which is what governs the architectural, engineering, and construction management change orders. And actually in that, it is, if it exceeds 500,000 or 10% of what that contract, whichever is less. So technically, a $50,000 contract would have to come to the board if the original contract, which is what this policy is speaking to, was $500,000.
Well, then I'd like to suggest, I think there's a problem with the language, because when I read this, or approve amendments to contracts for architectural, engineering, surveying, or construction management at-risk services, that's, that just shouts out to me, change order.
It could also include that we alter the scope ourselves, so we decide, for some reason we alter the scope and we direct the architect to add another classroom wing or those kinds of things. That's not exactly a change order, but it is a change to the scope.
Well, I think if that's the case, just some clarifying language, perhaps.
Right. And I, and to Jill's point, the language used for CM at risk is amendment. Sometimes we do projects in phases, where we don't design and build the entire project at one time, and so we have several amendments to a contract, which we bring to the board, and that's just a term that's used for construction management risk. So we may just bid the site grading and steel so that we can get things moving, then we will build, bid the rest of the building and bring that back to the board as an amendment. That's just a term that's used for it.
Well, what you're saying makes sense. I guess all I'm saying is, the language that's being used is broad language and perhaps overbroad.
Thank you. Linda and then Chrissy?
There again, you're not having control over change of, um-
Oh, excuse me.
The, what are they calling, what we're talking about? Change orders. It's because the scope grows, okay? That's the only reason you do it, all right? Or why you amend a contract, is your scope is growing, generally. Now, it could be cost-
It can be unsuitable soils. In change orders, they're generally a change in conditions. They're not generally, we're adding something else. It's, we got in to do the site work and there's unsuitable soils, or we got in to install the water and the groundwater perk, which we wish we would have known, and now we're running, you know, three miles away to get water. So, they, those are change orders, and those come under the auspices of change orders, and they're not just changing scope.
Well, but so does change of scope. Like you, someone even said, if we want to add a classroom, that's a change of scope, okay? All right?
It is, I think, and to his point, and this policy is using language that's associated with the work that's going on. So change orders is different than a contract amendment that's associated with construction management at risk, which is one of the things, I mean, that's what it says on the actual document that is signed, is an amendment. Change orders are used primarily whenever we do what we used to call hard bid, to what Mr. Coats just described, a designer designed something, we asked for three bids, to change that contract, we use a change order. But to amend a scope that's already defined and bid under the guaranteed maximum price, we use the language of amendment.
Okay, so, let's go to change orders then. What is the limit on the change order at this time?
Right, so, it is anything that exceeds 500,000 or 10% of the contract price, whichever is less.
And, and the size of our contracts generally are gonna be huge.
Correct.
So the chances of 10% being, there's gotta be a really minor project not to hit that 500,000.
Yeah, and most of the projects that we do now are CM at risk, so you're actually approving everything, all the contract.
Board members, we might have an easy solution. We actually have a policy on change orders that is per statute required for us to have. So we could clarify in this policy that change orders follow the procedures in policy 9030, and that would then make it different, a change in a contract is different than a change order, or an amendment to a contract is different than a change order.
Well, that would address my concern, because I think that this just opens up, you know, problems.
It would be an easy amendment if you wanted to do that.
I have one more question. What prevents me from doing a 500, and another 500, and another 500, and another 500 change order on a project? So we've got these huge projects, and at what point does a, where's the limit on the change orders? Because now you're growing, all right? Because two 500s, you know?
Yeah, I think just by itself, the 500 would require us to bring it to you, and each time that we had that 500, we would have to bring it to you. I think at the, at the end of the day, A, per the, the, the board policy for contracts over 300,000, which the board doesn't even approve, we provide the quarterly reports with change orders that have occurred during that, during that time. So you see all of the, the change orders that occur, regardless if it's something that the superintendent approves or the board approves. They, for the most part, all of our comprehensive, well, not for the most part, all of our comprehensive projects are construction management at-risk projects, for which we bring back the, we not only bring back the construction part, but we also get approval from the board for the, even the pre-construction contract, which is typically around $200,000. And every time that we amend that contract to add on portions of the work, we bring that, those contracts back to the board as well.
I'm just gonna say, we worked together in 2008. I had no issues with working with you, I fully have faith in your capabilities. It's the principle of the issue, that this, change orders was another major fight I had to go through. I don't think it's right. I don't think we, we have enough knowledge on it. Nothing, you know, towards superintendent, I just think that logically, if you look at businesses having those kind of large change orders, just curious as how many would do that without board approval from their directors or whatever. So, I'm not gonna beat this to death, it has nothing, there again. I don't think anything's fishy going on. I think it is procedural, in my view, and I like to do things the way I believe is in the best interests. You may not be here forever, superintendent may not be here forever, and, you know, so to have those kind of limitations on things is, in my view, long-term is a better way of handling things. But I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
With Chrissy, Diane, and then- With Chrissy, Diane, and then David.
I just wanted to state for the record that I have an issue with the $500,000 threshold. Dr. Oakley does a fantastic job of updating us in the consent agenda on change orders and things that come through that affect funding. But of course, we do have a responsibility to be as fiscally responsible as possible. And I think, you know, half a million dollars is a lot to be on one person's discretion. I think that my recommendation would be to lower that threshold to a different number so that the board is able to have influence on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Diane, and then David.
Just from a historical standpoint, I would remind the board, those of us who were here when we had the Smith High School, wasn't it the Phil House?
Oh.
Where we had, you know, that was...
The tile?
Yes, okay. And just that, you know, the staff did a yeoman's job of trying to help us understand, you know, what was going on, including, I think, having to change vendors in midstream. I mean, there was a bunch of things. And also, when we had the Central High School elevator thing. Those were times when we had, they had to do change orders because once they got into, particularly at Central, I think the city kind of stopped us somewhat as far as what we had to do to follow their guidelines for that. My point is simply, if you look back, I think staff has tried very hard to make sure that they let us superintendent know when change orders, particularly when it's been something that wound up going on and on. And I know that the Phil House at Smith was one of the things when I first got on this board that was a nightmare in how we wound up trying to rectify that. And we did have to keep putting out change orders in order to correct that because we had an obligation to that community and to the school to get it right because it wasn't done right, if I remember, initially. And then with Central High School, like I said, we ran into regulations.
Code issue.
Code, yeah, that made us wind up having to go a lot over budget in order to put that elevator in, if I recall. I don't know if you were still here when that happened. So I think we can have confidence that the staff is going to alert the superintendent and then in turn, if we need to be, you know, as far as the change orders or having to change the scope of contract. Because even on these two, these new projects, we have had some change of scope, have we not? Okay, so that's going to happen. And we don't want, I think that in today's dollars, a half a million is not considered a lot if you look at what you're dealing with. I mean, we have, what was it, $2.3 billion worth of bond to try to spend. So they need to be able to move forward, and I think we need to have confidence that they know what they're doing. And if there's something that triggers us to believe that these numbers need to be lower, then we can do that.
All right, so we're now, is there a motion?
Well, what I...
Oh, I'm sorry. David did have his hand up. I'm sorry, David.
Yeah, just internally, the administration, if you have a contractor comes to you and said, "I want a change order," and they lay it out for you, do you, at that point, investigate, take a look at it, and make a determination as to whether it could have been reasonably anticipated at the time of bidding that this problem would arise and therefore, you know, they just didn't do their due diligence, and you don't get your change order? Or you make the determination, hey, you really couldn't anticipate this, therefore, a change order is appropriate? Do you do that kind of analysis?
We do, and not only for change orders that require dollar amounts, also change orders that just ask for additional time on a project.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, everything's evaluated.
And my office is involved in those.
Okay, yeah. So basically, you sort it out, and if a change order was to either go to the superintendent or would come to the board, it would be, in your opinion and the opinion of council, a legitimate change order based on the inability at the time of bidding to understand what was happening or what would happen? Okay.
Well, and odds are, there have been discussions, negotiations. By the time it would be approved, it would be thoroughly vetted and discussed.
Well, I thought that was the case. I just want to lay that out, though. And when I'm saying I would be comfortable with a smaller figure, that's in no way saying anything about Dr. Oakley or any other future superintendent. It's just, you know, the board authorizes these contracts, and I understand Diane's comment that 500,000 or five, you know, isn't what it used to be. But around my house, it's still a lot of money. So I don't know. I think we ought to be involved and add a smaller figure.
Hello to our television audience. I would like to ask for our benefit if you could say a word about what led to this threshold amount and what informs that specific threshold
Oh, I can just start. It's in state statute. We've never had it in policy. This adds layers of oversight that we did not have in policy before. This 500,000 number has been in place for years and years and years. This is adding it to policy for our own protection.
Those are the bidding threshold numbers that the state uses.
I'll just add, as we go to vote on this, that, you know, from Sharon Osment to Angie Henry to now Tyler with Jill, Julius, and so many people that we've had here, again, our audits, our decision-making in the two decades plus that I've been here hasn't been a problem. And I think when we have a problem, then we can go back and revisit that. I think for the efficiency and for the effectiveness of being able to move things and with all the oversights that we have, that I'm comfortable with this. And so I appreciate the conversation. And there's just so many other examples that we can use that would have cost money and delays if it wasn't at this. And it is not, I guess, Susan should be involved in your financial decision-making at home, David, as it would be at my house. But I also agree that, you know, with what we've seen with this sort of bond projects and the amount of money, just talking about HVACs, all of these, this is certainly not what it used to be and the cost to get very simple things done, very simple things done. Diane?
Okay. And believe me, at my house, $500,000 is a lot of money too, because I ain't got it. But what I would like to make the motion, but add what Jill said was the compromise as far as directing where...
Right, and what the language did, and I've given mine to Rebecca already because I assumed someone would say that, we added with regard to change orders to construction policy, follow Policy 9030 at the end of the one, two, three, fourth paragraph.
Okay, does that satisfy you, Mr. Coats?
Yes.
Okay. I made the motion. I just want to know if it's okay with you.
All right, so I can get the vote now?
I think so.
Okay, David?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Pastor Sherrance?
Yes.
Linda?
Just to be mean, no. I'm glad she was mean first. No, sorry.
Diane?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes. Passed by a vote of seven to two. Thank you very much for that information and conversation. We are now at board member comments, and I will start with Deborah.
Meanwhile, everybody who was here for the last vote on that one is dealing with heartburn, am I right, y'all? Ready? Okay. First off, I would like to say thank you to everybody who came from Page to speak here at the board meeting. I've spoken with several of you on the phone the past few days. It's been great conversation. I appreciate the directness and the honesty. Without the hostility, that's been a very pleasant surprise to be able to speak frankly and openly and honestly about the struggles on both sides with this without anybody feeling the need to be nasty. So thank you all for the fantastic conversation and the comments here tonight in our public speaking session. There were a couple of things that came out of the public comments and the phone calls that I did want to put out there for general public knowledge. Yes, in the past allotment of money, there was several million dollars allotted for athletic facilities in our schools. This unfortunately was not optional. These are to bring our schools' athletic facilities up to compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act is what this money was spent for. We have to stay compliant with the ADA in all aspects, and that includes our athletics. And everyone has the right and the ability to play in our facilities, and we need to maintain that. The other thing that's come up quite frequently is the money that's been spent for building the new schools, the designs, the baubles, and the whole nine yards. And unfortunately, and probably one of the most heartbreaking parts of the process with these new schools is, and I wish that they were designed around the age of the students, or a lot of times, it doesn't even feel like we have to aim for the direction of the education. A good majority of the decisions we make around the design process of these schools these days has to be security. What is the cost of bulletproof glass? What is the cost of designing a new facility around a three-point entry atrium so you can make sure that nobody's coming in our schools with something that they don't need to have in our school? What is the cost of building schools that have cutoff doors in the halls so nobody can get past certain features? I want to stand here and tell you that we can start cutting all the fun little bells and whistles out, but we already are. There are people upset with us already because they feel like we are stripping down our Kathleen Johnson Science Elementary School, K8, that we're getting ready to build. And we won't be able to do everything there that we promised to do. But as long as a primary threat to our students comes from the outside in and the inside out, we design our buildings and we spend so much more on security than you would ever suspect. And it's not a reason, it's not an excuse, and I'm not trying to write anything off. Just know that we are not spending this money frivolously. We are doing our absolute best to put every penny we can in the best spots that we can. And Page is definitely on the radar. I'm out of time, or I would keep going. Page.
Thank you, David.
I was glad to hear all the people who showed up this evening to talk about the situation at Page, and especially the president of the student body, who laid it out, I think, very comprehensively and very well. I'm a relative newcomer, but my understanding is that it took an awful long time to get into this mess. And we're digging our way out, but we're not there. And it's going to take this whole community to pull together. Last month, when I had my three minutes, I mentioned that this board has no taxing authority. And of course, that continues to be the case. So we depend on getting our funds from the state, the feds, and the county. And it's up to those entities to really come through. And I think when you start talking about maintenance, that's the special area of the county. And I hope that the Page people show up at the county meetings and let them know what's going on. You know, I'd like to say the buck stops here, but it doesn't entirely. So I think people need to be aware of that, need to know how our system works or doesn't work, and make their feelings known. And, you know, it's a pretty sad situation. No child should have to go to school in some of the conditions that were laid out. No teacher should have to teach if these conditions, you know, exist in the way they've been represented. So something has to give. And we need to get a real partnership going, and it can't be politics as usual. So anyway, that's my comment. I hope everybody had a good Christmas, and 2025 is a great year for all of us.
Thank you, David, Diane.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the voters, the 19,418 voters that voted for me. That's the most votes I've ever gotten, so that's a lot, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the confidence. I will do my best. I apologize for having to be away, but, you know, life happens. I also want to thank staff for all of the hard work. Whenever I hear staff members talking about their commitment to GCS, why they stay, why they are here, and the years, whenever somebody sends me email and say, you know, I've been here 21 years. 21 years is a lifetime, you know, that's, you know, getting a child grown, you know. So for people to stay and want to work here, we need to do all we can to encourage and support our staff. Thank you to staff who sent me thank yous about the Christmas sleds, you know. That's my joy and my honor to do that. And I hope that staff will work with us based on what Mr. Coats just said to jointly advocate to our county commissioners to get off the money. And now is the time to start annoying them to the point that hopefully by the time we get to budget time, our superintendent will not have to sit there and have them tell her that there is no money, because that's a lie. There is money. It's a matter of how you want to spend it. So GCS, there are 10,000 of us. We need to be helping to make sure that we advocate for us and for our children to have the best. I hope everybody has a good MLK Day, and the theme for Black History Month this year is African-Americans and labor. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a very appropriate theme for us to talk about the hard work that African-Americans have done over the centuries to build this country. And when you look at the diversity in our, in our organization, you know, we have done a good job of making sure that black and brown people, women, old and young, have an opportunity to work for this system. So let's keep, you know, doing that and keep that in the forefront, because we're going to hear a lot of negative, I think. And it's up to us to keep the positive for our kids and to make sure that public education survives and that we give here in GCS the best that we can give to all of our children and all of our staff, because we've got to. Otherwise, public education will not be what it has been for many of us or for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Chrissy.
Happy New Year to everybody and welcome back to 2025. I know we've had a challenging start to this month with some of the weather challenges that we have. I just want to again extend a thank you to school safety, to Dr. Oakley, to transportation, to everybody working together to make decisions for the safety of our students and our staff and our parents. We have kids who walk to school. We have parents who drive their kids to school. We have kids who drive themselves to school. We have staff who drive themselves. All of these... these people are so very important to us. And yes, sometimes it's an inconvenience when school closes. I was a single mom. I understand how hard it is when school closes suddenly and you have to scramble to figure out what are you going to do with your kids and how are you going to do that. But inconvenience is so much more important than the lives of students and staff. They have to be our top priority, and I think we've made some good decisions. You know, we've got the option now for remote learning days. I know it's not everybody's favorite, but it's a way to continue that instruction while making sure that we're keeping people safe. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you to the Page community for showing up tonight. A lot of really, really good, compelling speakers with some valuable things to say. I think one thing in particular that came up a couple of times that, you know, really needs to sort of stay in the board's mind is the facilities master plan. And when it was created, you know, it was created in 2019, and how things have changed. And we've been through a global pandemic since then. We've got all sorts of supply chain issues across the board that have impacted costs. And we know, quite frankly, that we can't do everything that we had on that master plan originally. I personally think it would be in our best interest to revisit that in some way to make sure that we are spending that money equally across districts. You know, hearing that District Five is only getting 5% of them, I don't know if these numbers were accurate. I'm just saying what the speaker said, you know, that 5% is going to District Five and 20-some percent is going to District Three. We need to be sure that we're spending that money across the district, but also making the repairs that need to be made desperately to our schools. So, I would encourage us to revisit some of that and how we're spending that money. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
I want to say what makes a school is what's inside that school, is the teachers, it's the staff, it's the support staff that cares about those children and that are strong teachers. The fancy schools are great to have, but you can take that same staff and put them in a plain, solid school, and you're going to get the same outcome. All right? So, what's critical here is that schools are dry, that they're safe, and that the environment is a comfortable environment. They're not too hot. They're not too cold. That's where we need to focus. A lot of promises were made, and as other people on this board said. Number one, making a plan that large for an extended period of time is crazy because life changes. It never stays the same. So, we do need to revisit that, and we need to focus on the critical needs, the infrastructure, that schools are dry and that temperatures are in a comfortable situation and that they're safe. So, because I'm going to tell you, what makes, grows a student is that caring staff that takes that extra time to teach that child or to help that child. And the support staff is just as big a part of that as anything. So, yeah, we need, people need to understand the money is tight at this point, and we're going, we need to make sure we're using it in the best way possible to meet the needs, to at least make them warm, safe, and dry. All right? For every school in this district. So, I definitely agree that we need to refocus on how we're using them, what dollars we have, and we'd like to see that. The other issue, I would like to say, it's been, we've seen a lot of loss in December and in January. And I just want to say, my heart goes out to all those families during these holidays that have suffered a major loss at this time. So, no, my thoughts and prayers with you, and that's about all you can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Chara?
I'm going to borrow a microphone. Some technical difficulties here. Let me say that it was such a compelling showing by Page tonight and grateful to that community. And also note that they offered that while mourning the death of Summer Hunter, beloved teacher, a real heartbeat of the Page community. And we remember her and grieve with the community. They presented specific needs about Page, but I think they're also representative of a lot of larger issues that need our consideration as board and leadership. President Cam Cooper, who has never made a speech in the Page auditorium, but sure made one here in this boardroom tonight, asked the question, how do we get here? And we know that is an enormous answer, and I appreciate that awareness from the Page community as well, the awareness of funding issues that are higher than us, the presence that they have had at the county commissioners meeting. But as it relates to the current HVAC needs at Page, one technician described it as like a pot of spaghetti that's all matted together and gummed up. And if that's true of an HVAC system, how true is that of the even larger issues in public education? And it comes from these enormous things, like years of underfunding and neglect and failure to prioritize. And so much of that is larger than us and predated us, but it is ours to sort out now. I've walked the halls of Page with Mr. Nagley, with Mr. Duggins, the booster president who spoke tonight, heard the concern, seen the passionate commitment of the community, and I'm eager to work together to find some fresh solutions. And it seems to me that, as it has been said, that that leads us to some reevaluation of how we use the bond funds moving forward. I've been on the board for just over two years, and because of that tenure, I've felt the need to remain loyal to the 2019 study that predated me, that predated Dr. Oakley's leadership, Dr. Monk's leadership. There's a lot of good work that went into that, but I do increasingly think that we need to open ourselves up to evaluating that study and what has changed since then. The great work secured a historic bond, but it does not have to bind us into using it precisely that way. And so, I do think that we have before us work to evaluate and adapt that was brought into focus tonight, to try to consider how to have a broader impact within the constraints that exist, to better spread that impact throughout the whole of our district, and in all of these ways to inspire confidence and enthusiasm in this bond that we can build on as we propose the essential future bonds in the future. However we do this, however we resolve these larger issues, and solve the most pressing building issues at Page, whenever we do end up with a usable Page auditorium, I'd just like to close by saying, I want to be there to hear Cam give a speech.
Thank you, Pastor. Betty?
Thank you. To the amazing staff, I'd like to say thank you for all the work you do, and that's for all the Gifford County School employees. As far as we have our speakers to come up and do their comments, it would be great if there's factual information that's being shared. Sometimes you hear things, I would say by email or text, but it's not factual information. But of course, we are here to listen to all of the comments. Congratulations to Cone Elementary in Montlu for receiving the P-Tech Signature School Award, and that's an award when the school has shown overall growth. I enjoyed myself at Dr. Mo Green inauguration. It was absolutely wonderful, and it was at the best place because he had it at an EC school at Haynes Emmon, and that's his, I think his mother is an EC teacher. So, I thought it fit very well together. And as Chairman Hayes had mentioned about Chief Thomas talking to a group of individuals last night at Barbara Park, that was phenomenal, and he is going to do that throughout the community. He's going from site to site. I think Brown Recreation Center is next, so that is over by Randman Road. But he had a wealth of information to share, and what was somewhat alarming was most of the shooting is age 19, I think, to 35, 25. Okay. Well, 25 or 35, one of those. And I noticed that there's a lot in District Seven that's going on. So, of course, that's my district, so I try to have my nose in that every chance I get. Right, Richie? Okay. On, can we get him pulled up? On January 21st, League Women Voters are having a forum, and it consists of Jean Smith and Lucy Bond. They are with the Legislative Active Team, and they'll be speaking on education. So, we invite you to come out, and that starts at 11:30. The speakership starts somewhere around 12:15. And I think that is all I have for tonight, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. Cam?
Yes, Happy New Year, everyone, and, you know, bid oh to, we don't have taxing authority. I would love to continue to advocate for that opportunity for all the school districts, actually, in North Carolina. I also was, am, you know, committed to bringing all of our buildings up into the 21st century because the environment is impacting teachers and students. We have to remember that we lost three schools in a swoop of minutes, you know, with the tornado that sat down, you know, in Greensboro, because, you know, we've allowed, you know, buildings, you know, to just not really be facilities of, you know, even safety for that matter. So, it is a work that we are going to, I believe that we are the board that can do this work, and I heard the community loud and clear tonight in regard to Page. I have been to that building, and I know Mr. Nagley, you know, really well. He is a great school leader, and it's very important for parents to have the right information and know who they need to target for funding in regard to the schools in all of North Carolina. And lots of times, our buckets have already been planned for us when we receive funding. So, it may look like someone mentioned tonight that they know that we have some money somewhere. It just doesn't work that way with public dollars and school funding. It does not flow that way. So, we are doing the best that we can do, and I know that we're going to continue building, you know, great schools for all of the children. And I think we're going to continue to lead with equity in that regard and making sure that we continue to prioritize. That list was made with prioritizing the needs of the entire district. And so, I do think that we have made a promise to the public when they voted for those bonds and for the plan that we presented to them. So, we have to be very mindful of what we did say in 2019 and going forward, and how that is going to look. And we already knew that coming out of the pandemic, they already told us what we were going to lose because of the costs and inflation and things of that nature. So, it is work that, you know, we're going to prioritize, and we are a very great district, you know. Congratulations to our district and the acknowledgement on the national level as well. So, welcome back.
Thank you, Cam. And thank all of you. You all said something that was, you know, something I would certainly would have wanted to include in my comments and don't need to say again, but I really appreciate that. I think also as a graduate sometime in the 1900s from Page High School, I also appreciate, you know, fellow pirates coming out and advocating for the school. Also, Pastor Chara, thank you so much for lifting up the loss of Summer Hunter. And again, I think for the whole community, the loss of Officer Mike Haran, his family, his colleagues, and his friends. And just want to mention that. I think that context as well, every board, I think, has done the best they can trying to figure out how to meet school needs. And if this particular bond has prioritized a particular district is because the one in 2002, the one in 2003, the one in 2008 addressed the needs that were going on at that time. And so, we just can't look at this through a peephole. We have to just step back and to see, you know, it's a shell game. And we know that, you know, when somebody was talking about, like, we've just set aside a little bit of money for maintenance, you know, and not really understanding the whole sort of, you know, how we get money and where that money comes from and what we're able to do with it. And, you know, thank God for Joey Solomon, you know, one of what, three HVAC? I mean, you couldn't have planned that tonight, you know, this poor guy is coming here, you know, that we are lifting up and, you know, and he couldn't even really enjoy his award because he's just like, I just can't do it all, you know. But thank you to him and to all of the, to the two others, and the staff and everybody is just trying to patch this up. I know this is so complicated because if we've got something, I was just talking to Dr. Oakley, I'm stunned at how much an HVAC system costs for a high school. I mean, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars for an HVAC system. And if it's on the schedule to be done in two years, you know, how do we address the HVAC needs now and it's on schedule to have something done to it? And you've got 126 of those that have something going on. So, it's a lot more complicated. I think when people make it seem simple, it just seems like we're just not, you know, responding or making good decisions, but there's a whole lot to that. I'm also open to going back and looking at the plan. I also know that that's not going to make a lot of people happy because people said, you promised. Right? And so, and we'll do the best that we can. And thank you, Pastor Chara, for talking about the inspiration and the confidence which will do this and not the cynicism and provocation. So, I appreciate that. So, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, dang, Diane, I might have wanted to say something more profound, but I wasn't. I was asking for a motion to adjourn. So, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone.